Welcome. Thank you for attending. Welcome to this meeting of the Wasting Streets Scene Policy Committee. Later in this meeting today, we will be considering exempt information. So at that point, we will ask the committee to agree that the press and public will be asked to leave the room. Until then, obviously, press and public are welcome, and we are being webcast. Please kindly request that mobile phones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode. There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from town hall staff. Assembly point is Tudor Square. I will now ask members of the committee to introduce themselves. I am councillor Joe Otten, councillor John Topley, and chair of this committee. Alexi?
Councillor Alexi Diamond, Green Party spokesperson.
Paul?
Paul Turpin, Green councillor for Gleithers Valley Wood.
Mike?
Mike Chaplin, councillor for Salisbury Ward and deputy chair of this committee.
What's your name? Adam. Adam.
Yeah. Councillor Mark Jones.
Oh, that's it.
Labour councillor for Burnley Ward. Cheers, Joe.
I knew that. I knew that. Senior moment. Janet?
Hello, I'm councillor Janet Riddler, Labour councillor for Stockbridge and Upadon.
David?
Hi, councillor David Barker, councillor for Richmond Ward. Here is a late substitute.
Thank you. Tim?
Tim Hoggan, councillor for Crookton Crossfall.
Cliff?
Councillor Cliff Woodcraft, councillor for Fullwood.
Marvelous. Thank you. Shall we do introductions of officers as well while we're here? Sarah, let's go first.
Thank you, Chair. Sarah Bennett, Assistant Director for Legal and Governance.
Thank you. Ashman?
Good afternoon. Ashman, I'm the executive director of Operational Services.
Alice?
Alice Nicholson, Policy and Improvement Officer, sitting in here for Democratic Services today.
Richard?
Good afternoon all. Richard, I'm the director of Streets Scene Regulation.
Hi.
Chloe Bauer, Service Manager, Licensing Service.
Craig?
Hi, Craig Harper, Policy Officer from the Licensing Service.
Thank you. I think I see other officers in the room, but we'll come to them. We'll do introductions when they come to their items. Right. So apologies for absence. I have Nabil and Mulana as an apology with David Barker substituting. Exclusion of public and press, I have mentioned. The report on items 14 and 15 is not available because it contains exempt information, and we will close the meeting at that point. Declarations of interest. Any declarations of interest? No, thank you. Minutes of the last meeting on page nine. Yeah, yeah. Minutes of the last meeting on page nine. Is that agreed as correct record? I'll take silence as a sent.
It was just on item 6.4 and 6.5, page 10, a question from Bridget Ingle. We've not put in a reply there. Our legal and democratic services are aware of that and will be dealing with it in due course.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor. Yes, that's correct. There was an answer to that question, and it should have been put in the minutes. It will be at future meetings, I understand. But that reply will be sent over. Thank you. With that noted, are we agreed that's correct record?
Agreed.
Thank you. Thank you. Item seven, the work programme. I have a correction on that, actually. I think I can find it. Yes, on page 26, we're expecting a report on the Housing General Fund and Housing Revenue Account. I think that's possibly appeared on the wrong committee's work programme. I hope it's not missing from the Housing Committee's work programme because that's what it needs to be.
No, I would agree with you on that. I'm not sure that that's right. But there is a budget monitoring call, so I think it's just the wrong title.
Thank you. Now, I would like, it has been discussed, I think, with all groups, but I would like to suggest we consider adding to the work programme a session where we invite Amy to speak to us regarding the performance of Amy against the contract. I hope we can schedule that into a meeting later this year. I think that would be useful for us all to understand some of the challenges that the city is facing with that contract and performance relative to it. I'm sure we've all been hearing cases in our wards of problems there. I would also like us to have a look at the markets and the market strategy. I know one of our targets for savings is to improve the performance of the markets in terms of the uptake of stalls and so on. So that's the more markets, the critical markets. I would like to see that in the work programme if members agreed. And the final item, it's not a specific item, but I think I'd like it noted that obviously we are having to make some savings in this portfolio area, and we're being asked to save a lot more than frankly we can in this area. But I think in order to show willing, we should consider bringing reports to us to make savings in year rather than waiting for the budget at the end of the year. So I think I'd like that noted, the work programme that we will consider, we're willing to consider reports making savings just to bring them forward a little bit in the cycle. Because, you know, I think we are all aware that the financial state of the council is quite urgent. The savings challenges being asked for is extremely bad. And if we can save a little bit more money by starting a bit sooner, then that might make all the difference. Okay. Any further comments on the work programme? Alexi?
Yeah, thank you. I was expecting that parking enforcement would be on the work programme because we have discussed this, you know, quite at length in pre-agendas and in our briefings. And I was expecting that this would be on the work programme.
Yes, I agree. Alice?
If you want to add it in, or suggest it's added, you're welcome to do that.
Yeah, I think we agree with that. I think we are expecting some work on parking enforcement to come before us. We know, obviously, there's the pavement parking trial in the city centre. We know there are other initiatives going on around the city. The police are doing the Park Safe thing in the North West, for example, which, you know, I'm kind of hoping might reach out into the rest of the city. But yeah, I think there's a piece of work for us to do. Mark?
Thank you, Chair. I'd be particularly interested in seeing what parking services can do to support our district's streets, scenes, highways, commercial areas, specifically the district centres. So, thank you. We've got an economic bid ongoing on Spill Hill. One of the issues that we have is parking. It's constantly raised, and there's nothing we can do about it without the enforcement. So though I'd like to have stuff about parking enforcement on the agenda, I don't want it to be a city-centric approach. We need to do something to make sure we support all those other initiatives the council's trying to do to boost economic activity elsewhere across our city. So if we can have that particularly in there as a theme, that would be really appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you. Point well made.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I was wondering whether, as we have responsibility for the Amy and Violia contracts, whether we should be looking at those at some point. I'm not suggesting it should be this year, but there will come a point when we should be looking at them and possibly checking on the performance of them.
Thank you. Yes, that's the reason for the item on the Amy contract I just proposed that we add to the agenda. So yeah, that was that. Violia contracts, I think, yes, we are responsible for that, for, you know, our side of that contract. I think, yeah, I'll let Richard here come in on this.
Thanks, Chair. I think just jumping to the parking question first. We did talk about bringing it on February. It's just not on the plan. So we're proposing to bring the parking strategy to committee on February the 15th. Just on the Violia and Amy contracts, as the Chair's already expressed, we're looking at December to bring the Amy contract performance.
Yeah.
So the Amy contracts will be discussed at the December committee. We've already briefed members on the Violia contract a few weeks ago, but we'll bring a Violia update as part of that, that's Amy and Violia committee agenda in December. So they'll be December, then the parking one is in February.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further comments on the work programme? All right, I'll draw that to close there. I echo the comments being made on parking. I mean, the other thing that certainly I get case work on is parking around schools at pick-up and drop-off time. I saw the number 25 bus in Bradway very nearly get stuck the other day because of the parking there. So, you know, obviously, if we can do something about that, that would be good. And there are kind of, it does feel like there are some more options coming on stream that may or may not be able to deliver some improvement for us. So it'd be good to take the opportunities that we can. Thank you. Right. So item, sorry, I skipped public questions petitions, didn't I? I went straight to work programme. I'm not reading my agenda correctly. So public questions and petitions is the item I should have taken a moment to go. I've got a number of questions and petitions, a petition and a number of questions have been submitted. I have, I can see three members of the public who've come to ask questions. I make it, oh yeah, so twelve. So Ibra Hussain, would you like to go first? Do you want to come to the mic and turn it on and introduce yourself?
Thank you, Chair. Ibra Hussain, I've got a petition and I've got questions in relation to the report before yourself. I'll take your guidance on it. And just as a comment to your work programme, I think the world will not be savings. I think it will be the courts, what I read, but that's a different debate anyway. As for today's petition, I present, Chair, I did present this petition partly before as well. And I never received a response to this by petition previously presented before you was on the additional test centres in Sheffield. In Sheffield, we only have one taxi test centre, for the easier understanding, and it is difficult to get a test because I recently bought a vehicle and I was very lucky to get a test. But otherwise, I had to wait a week for the business. That is not acceptable. What is more disappointing is that we have got Wolverhampton, a test centre in Sheffield, a test centre in Rotherham, and the Sheffield licensed vehicle cannot have extra test centres. They can and we can't. And they work in the same city with us, and they work on the same private hire operators, pick up the residents of Sheffield. If they are safe enough, we are safe enough as well. So we want that opportunity as an additional test centre, not to get rid of the current test centre on Stanfus Road, Shirland Lane, but to have additional test centres. Previously, this was looked at as a procurement many years ago, but unfortunately, the conditions that were set by the legal department within the council were so onerous that no sensible person will take that offer on. So I do ask that this committee really looks at this, gives me and my colleagues an opportunity to exercise our, as stakeholders, the right to have an extra additional test centres, an opportunity for people to apply and follow what is within the framework. Now, what's also more disappointing, I buy a new vehicle veto, there is no roller machine in the council's test centre at this current, but for the TX1 there is. Well, it's not up to date, and we need more facilities and more opportunities to have that as a stakeholder. I contribute to the council's fee structure and pay for the fees for the test. I pay £59. If it was a private, there is more flexibility in choice and also in the pricing. So as a small business, one man band, I ask that this is taken seriously and a report is brought here to this committee and looked at in depth because I don't want to be brushed off on this because this has been done previously. This is not acceptable, and I don't get a reply. I come back after three months. I have to do another petition. To me, this is, your process of petitions is unacceptable to just not give a reply and look into, because I've done other petitions. If I'm not getting responses, I assure you, I will keep on coming here and I will keep on telling you because as a resident of Sheffield, I am not happy and as a licensee, Chair, I take this opportunity because legally, I can do this. You can't stop me from doing petitions and coming in and speaking here. I am frustrated, I am upset, and I'm angry because I've been doing this for 34 years, and I don't want to be brushed off and like no other colleagues. I'm angry because it's very unfair because I, Wolverhampton, they don't contribute anything to the city, and they take everything from us. They have the opportunity. I don't have the opportunity, and my colleagues don't have opportunity. I want you to please look into this as a priority. Directors are here as well, and I want someone to pull their finger and do something about this. I don't want empty rhetoric on this. That's my petition for that. If you want me to ask questions, I will further ask that or want later on the report.
Thank you. Thank you, Ibra. Yeah, I can only apologise for your previous attempt at the petition not being dealt with properly. I'm not sure what happened there. I'm sure we can look into that. Certainly, it's received now. We've received it. I can advise you that the issue of test centres will be considered as part of the vehicle policy that is coming to this committee later in the year. So I hope that, you know, we will be able to do something at that time that will give you some satisfaction. Yeah, do you want to just proceed with your questions?
Okay, Chair. There's so many that, let me go into my emails again because I don't have a printer now. Just one second, Chair. Bear with me. Okay, Chair. My additional questions in this report, and also the additional questions I have before you, Chair, is as follows. And I think the officers are also in receipt, or should be in receipt of my question, which I submitted in advance as requested. At the moment, the process within the council of renewing a taxi badge is taking far longer than it should do. And my question on that is why are they taking so long to process renewal of a taxi badge when the whole process is online and done? The British passport, if you apply for that and do it online, within four to five days it's done because all the work and the data is in there already. Also, the implementation of the new proposed policy, which is before you today, is being proposed for 1st of November 2022. Can officers confirm are all staff and resources in place to implement this policy? And if refresher courses will be carried out in-house and also for the existing drivers, I want clarification. I am recommending that the 1st of November is taken forward and to start from the new financial year 2023. Licensing officers always say that they haven't got enough resources. So how, I don't understand that this is being expected 1st of November. When will the licensing service open to the taxi drivers? That's one of the questions I keep on getting asked. I know it's open for the staff, but when will it get open for the taxi drivers? IT issues, when will the licensing service, I think this will be for the Claire really, to come back on, and we've had a meeting with her. She's been very helpful, to be honest. But I do want to know, when will the IT issue be sorted and a portal be available so I can log in and put my details in as an individual? Any progress and what's happening with that? A licensing service does not publish your taxi trade enforcement action and enforcement and its cost to evaluate what we, the licensee, pay for annually through our fees. So enforcement is carried out, but we don't get no results or value for money. And I want to understand the figures because I'm one of those guys who likes to look through the figures very carefully and understand. If I pay for something, I want to know, am I getting value for money? That information must be provided. How many staff members are in licensing service and dealing alone as taxi section? Is the service at full capacity or what is the current situation? Has city councils supported financial licensing service now? Licensing service cannot take any money from the council's budget, the general budget, but it's got to be self-funded. So I want to know, has the council's general funding has been applied here, if, how much? How many Hackney Carriage licences are in safekeeping currently? The figure, I think, is 400 and something or 500 at the moment licensed, but I want to know how many are safekeeping? Future taxi policies, can we have that, please? And the timeline for Hackney Carriage, private hire and operator, and the fees review as well? I also asked for the update, and the officers provided me with regards to what the licensing committee responded to. And I was grateful for that. And one of the points I do pick up, and I hope is highlighted very carefully, is that the response that the committee gave was two issues, overcharging and refusal of fares. What more can be done? Timeline for undertaking disability awareness. Just on the drivers overcharging and refusing fares. Well, I've been raising this for years with the council, on Carver Street, bottom of the Mall, late night clubs. Nothing seems to get done. I do blame that those who do it, they need to be caught and prosecuted and dealt with. But the failure is of the licensing. You are failing as a council, letting down the people of Sheffield for people who are getting charged, overcharged. And I'll give you one example. I had a fare someone the other day, two days ago, want to go to Dennington. It's about 28, 30 pounds, 14 miles. £45 was asked. I took him. It was 29, 70 altogether. It's wrong. You need to take action. People are working late. Young people, they're drunk. An advantage has been taken. They've been refused job after job. Licensing needs to get out and do his job, and this is part of the enforcement. If you're not doing your job, then tell us. You don't bother, then we all go and start doing wrong. Because I don't want to do wrong. I've done for 34 years as a responsible person, as a licensee, and I want this job to be done correctly. So there is a failure. People have been overcharged, and people have been refused. If it's a small job, I don't want to do it. No, it's not good enough. And also, card payments. We need that in place in modern day, you know, today with everyone paying by card, cashless, and people are crying and nothing is done. So I think we need to take the head out of the sand, look ahead, and look what's happening because it is not good enough. Also, Chair, on the policy issue today as well, I just wanted to say the email I've sent in, two things very important. Why is it that the council needs to know which operator I work with as a private hire driver in a sense of having a sign on? Nowadays, the customer looks for the vehicle. In the past, the driver was looking for the passenger. And the passengers, I see, they move to the edge, they know which vehicle it is, what colour it is, what driver it is, where it is. It's pinned. So the submission we've made very clearly, one is that there is no need of the private hire operator signage on the driver's vehicle because the world has moved on. We are in 2022, moving 2023. The only thing the licensing service needs to know is the driver is licensed, the vehicle is all properly done, the private hire operator is all within the framework as well. So for all that, I think it is very, very important that you take that on board. And possibly, I think you might have to do it in the private hire vehicle policy as well. As for which company they work with, my phone, if I have five emails on here, I get notification for all five emails on one device. I don't need five phones for five companies. We've moved on. Then I open or I get a blip, and I just click on it, and I just click on the job. Why are you restricting my job? Why are you, when I'm doing everything safely, properly? I think this is absolutely wrong. So two things. I should be allowed as a licensed driver to work with whichever company, as many companies, because I come to work. I'll give you an example. If somebody had a £10 in their hand and a £5 in their hand, and they'll say to me, which one do you want? I'll say I'll take both because I go out there to earn a living. I don't go out there to say, no, I want 10 or I want 5. No, I want both because that's my job. With the current climate, we are struggling. We are struggling to make ends meet. And I also say on the signage, please take this signage out. It is not licensing service business to know whether I have got the door signage on or not because then they get a notification. The only thing you need to know is that I have declared everything to you, done everything properly to you, and that it is done within a proper framework. The world is moving so fast, but the licensing service unfortunately is in the 19th century, and it's not acceptable. It's disappointing that we are where we are, but you've got to work with the trade and understand how the trade practically works on the ground outside. I've been doing Hackney for all my life, but I've got colleagues here who'll be doing private hire at the same time as me, and they will back me on this, that the reality outside in practice is different to what the decisions are made here. So please listen to us and work with us to change these policies. Thank you very much. And I'm available for any questions you have as well.
Thank you, Ibra. So clearly, some of the questions you've raised are relevant to the driver policy that we're going to discuss later in the meeting. So I think the answers to those questions will come in the discussion that we're going to have and the decisions we're going to make on the driver policy. Many of the other points you raised are relevant to other policies, such as the vehicle policy, signage comes under the vehicle policy, for example. So that's obviously coming later in the year. Your comments will be taken into account. You have a very long list of questions, which, given the time, we can't answer right now. So you'll get written answers to those in due course. I can, just for, because it's worth repeating, tell you that, yes, the council's general fund has been subsidising the licensing service. The fees haven't been sufficient to cover all the costs, and that is why there is a fees review later in the year that we're expecting to do. So you can see that in the work programme and this committee's agenda. You can see when the other policies are expected to come again on this committee's work programme. So do go there. Thank you, Mr Hussain. Can I go to, is it, James Martin, please?
Good afternoon, everyone. Glad to be able to join you in person this afternoon. Actually, what I'm asking is a reminder of an item presented last time for the driver policy that's come back for reconsideration. So I know the licensing committee had some concern of the timeframe for undertaking disability awareness training, that rising to three years in the update to the policy that's presented today would be not quick enough. So I'd like to urge everyone to really ensure that we get going on this and that actually it's a much shorter day of time. There's many disabled people where actually extra support from drives, extra understanding would make a big difference. There are some great drivers out there, but there's clearly some, that the extra information, training, and expectation will help the disabled community to use the service. I know a couple of things from, for example, the Sheffield Voices Group, where there's many people with learning disabilities, where it was noted, they're often not feeling listened to when they need something from a driver and getting an experience of disrespect in the attitude and the communication. And so helping drivers to understand the experience of people who are affected in that way is really important. Since the last meeting, also, we've had one session with Sheffield Rovers Society for the Blind where several of the people present there were just feeling particularly understanding their needs of not being able to identify a cab needing sighted guiding to or from their destination. So all of those things would be essential for them to be able to reliably use the service. And so this is about levelling up the playing field, actually, for both their access to the service and that all drivers are in a position to work well with their needs, not just the ones that are putting their real care and compassion into things. Also noting what was just said, if drivers are on more than one operator's app, then I think it becomes very easy to start avoiding certain trips that might be shorter, that then makes it much harder for people who maybe need that extra use of a taxi on a trip that other people would be able to walk. And I think it's really important that there's not a cherry picking of jobs. And, you know, Hackney Carriage drivers, we've obviously heard here that that's not right, and it's just the same for private hire, actually, when stuff's coming on a queue. If you're looking at five queues, then it starts making it harder for people to get service, I believe. So, yeah, in conclusion, let's just get the city into a place where it's easier for disabled people to use the taxi service and where drivers are getting that training much quicker than the three-year period. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Martin. So again, the answer is similar to that to Mr Hussain, is that obviously the issue of So again, the answer is similar to that to Mr Saye, is that obviously the issue of the time given, allowed for training, disability training for tax drivers is something that we'll discuss in the item coming up. But I think, you know, your points are very well made. Equally that the issue on signing on to multiple operators is something that we'll discuss in the items to come up. So yeah, so you will have your answers by the end of the day, hopefully, rather than I can't give them to you now. Can I ask Paul Gosney, please, to come and ask a question?
That better, I don't think, don't need one. My name's Paul Gosney, Business Development Director at City Taxis. Two thousand and ten I started, my responsibility was to build the business in Sheffield, build a taxi business, provide a service. That service has been renowned throughout the years until recently, where our drivers have got multiple choices to work on multiple platforms. And I ask that section ten stands as is proposed for a driver working for one platform at one time. This, the reason for that is to improve safety and improve service levels. Mr Martin just mentioned about service levels, about options. Our drivers have got options, the drivers of Sheffield, Sheffield's region have got options. Our drivers are very busy, they earn a very good living. We've got the figures, hundred and fifty five thousand jobs last week were declined because our drivers declined those jobs. The service levels have gone down. So I'd like section ten, I'm asking to remain as is, please.
Thank you, Mr Gosney. Again, the answer to your question will come in the discussion, the item to follow. That concludes the public questions and the petition that we have before us. I would like to add that we have received a number of submissions from members of the public on the issue of the multiple drivers signing on to multiple apps at the same time. My count is thirty four against the proposed provision of the policy to say that drivers should not be allowed to sign on to multiple apps. So the thirty four submissions have come in saying please allow drivers to continue to sign on to multiple apps. So those comments in full have been circulated by email to members of the committee. Sorry, was there another public question? Yes. Right, my apologies. Please come to the mic, turn it on and introduce yourself.
Councilors, members of the public, my name's Nasserov. I am a GMB Taxi Representative for Yorkshire and Humber Side drivers. So I represent best of close to a thousand drivers across Yorkshire and Humber Side, majority of them which work in Sheffield and reside in Sheffield. I've come to address you today as a committee on behalf of two main parts to it, if you like, one on the point based system for convictions policy, which I'd also like to address you on, and also the working on multiple platforms as well. I'll start off with the point based system and the statutory guidance that's been given by the Department for Transport at this moment in time. We find as members and as people within the taxi trade, speaking to some of our customers as well and through discussions with solicitors and legal team, that these proposals that are being forced upon a council to follow are unproportionate, they're not diligent enough, they are unfair, discriminatory in certain areas as well, seeing that drivers can go with an insurance crime and commit an insurance offence and be driving around without insurance and can get a licence the following year and then somebody using their mobile phone can't get a licence for five to seven years. We find the policies very extreme and we believe that the statutory guidance should remain exactly that, statutory guidance, and the council should not adopt it if it's our policy because some of the time limits that are being set have been amended by the council's licensing team, which we're grateful for. We'd ask the committee to approve the policy without the time limits and leave the licensing committer to make the decisions. So where if there is a driver that has been accused of committing a mobile phone offence at this moment in time, it's referred to a licensing committer, we would ask for that same system to stay in place and not to change as per the statutory guidance that's been offered. So that's on that. The main issue today I'm here with is working on multiple platforms. Now, my members, me, I've been a taxi driver for fifteen years up until recently, I now manage my own small business, but I'm still a taxi rep. I've spoken to hundreds of drivers regarding this and speaking to various meetings we've had and then also speaking with the council, which we're very grateful for an emergency meeting that they put on last week with reps to discuss this issue. And we've come up with a balanced average, which we said we were going to put across today with Claire and some of the discussions we've had. And although we understand the customer levels, customer service side of issues, there are other ways to deal with customer service complaints that have been raised from people like the Disability Action Forums and from others such as private operators, there are other ways and means of dealing with that. Restricting self-employed drivers to work and tell them they can only work on one platform, I don't think you've got the given right to do that. And the reason why I say you haven't got the given right to do that is because the clue's in the word self-employed, they work for themselves, you can't guarantee them an income. So how can you say, well, you can only work on, let's just say, City Taxis or you can only work on Uber, when you're not paying that person's bill, the cost of living expenses and the crisis that we're all facing, taxi drivers aren't exempt from that. They've got a huge massive burden of costs to deal with. And then the impact of Covid nineteen, you said these people were heroes and you're treating them like third class citizens now by saying you're restricting them and you must do this, you must do that. It's about time you let them earn what they need to earn. You have a very strict licensing policy, a very comprehensive one, that achieves the right results. There are other ways and means of dealing with the customer service levels. This is nowhere near what you need to be doing. You're restricting a self-employed taxi driver's income and I think you need to really, really consider the message you're sending out to your drivers that you were calling heroes. And in fact, it was a licensing committee chair, Karen, that actually said these people were heroes during the Covid nineteen pandemic. It was in the front page of Sheffield Star. You're sending the opposite image now because now you're saying, we're going to restrict you and we don't want you earning that money. Saying all drivers are earning good, that might just be one platform, that does not, there's over a hundred operators in Sheffield and that's going to increase, work is going to increase, competition's going to increase, demand is going to increase, customer service levels could be down to a hundred and one reasons, like the Covid nineteen impact, it's took many drivers away from the taxi trade. There are other areas where things have gone terribly wrong as well. The real situation on the ground is people aren't getting their taxis on time because of the shortage of drivers, but there are other drivers coming into the city as well that are working, such as the Rosington drivers, Wolverhampton and various others. They're all coming and working, the levels are going to get back up there, there are more applications coming in through the door and we've seen that from speaking to licensing officers earlier in the week. So there is ways and methods of actually addressing the issues that we have. I do not believe restricting, as a union man, I do not believe restricting a self-employed taxi driver by saying you must work and earn this amount of money because that's what in essence you're saying is reasonable in today's day and age or you pay the bills. And I'd also like to kind of just for the record, thank the council officers for making some time to speak to us, we're really grateful. It's a difficult time for licensing, as you're all aware, on the loss of a colleague, a friend, and we kind of share our support and our sympathy with them and we hope we can continue some of the work that we've done. But I'll leave the rest of all the remarks for the reviews that we're going to do because I don't want to waste too much time for this committee. All right?
Thank you very much, Mr Ruiv. I mean, my apologies, I went to the answering room to where people should have been ushered and found three people asking, wanting to ask questions. So I, you know, I seen those in three, we now have three minutes left for public questions. Did you submit your question in advance, sir?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay, well, please come to the microphone and we'll try and get you, get yourself and the answers in in the next three minutes if we can. Turn it on, please, yeah, introduce yourself.
Thank you, Chair. The name is Mamadi Yasin. Like I agree with my colleagues with Ibra and Nasserah, who what they've said about this, what's been trying to introduce in this new drivers' policy. Also, I agree with Ibra's petition about the MOT stations. Paul Gosney is my colleague as well, Aklasim is a colleague as well. What's happened in the last few years is actually, it's not right because someone who's been involved with consultations and then policy meetings and then passing the last twenty years, I think that I stopped because of introduction of what you call recognition policy. There's lack of consultations out there, we need to start talking again. Sheffield was one of the best run councils, licensing departments in the country, which now is good, for me, it's going down the hill. Our gates are shut on Stanleyford Road. Personally, myself, I'm trying to renew a licence, it took me four days to get through to, I'm sorry to say, to our department and just can't get through. And we are talking about here about restrictions. Restrictions at this day and age should not be put on restrictions, like Nasser said and like Ibra said, we are self-employed people. If the companies have a problem, they can talk to us, they can talk to people like myself, I've been a private hire driver for thirty four years, like Ibra, right? We can resolve issues, but this by putting restrictions, trust me, this will not resolve. Sheffield is known as one of the biggest villages in the world, right? It's because from Moss Brook to Stockbridge is twenty miles. How can Stockbridge, only person who taxi driver will sit at Stockbridge? He will not sit unless there's a job there. So a customer can nowadays, technology is so good that they can tell whether which company, what driver is visiting that area and they can choose, right? It's a choice. Me personally, I only work for one company, but others, they choose to work on multiple apps. Why should there be restrictions? That's all I've got to say, sir.
Thank you very much. So obviously the issue of the multiple operators will be discussed in the item to follow. The question of the periods of prohibition of granting a licence after offences such as the use of a mobile phone, my understanding is that those periods have been taken, they were originally consulted on in this policy, they've been taken out of the policy, but obviously the subcommittee still has to apply that same statutory guidance and has to give very good reasons when it doesn't and write those reasons down if it deviates from that guidance. So that I understand is the position that the proposed policy is in. I don't see, I don't see how it can go further than that without actually going against the guidance, which we're not limited to do. That concludes the period of public questions. The next item on the agenda is the review of private hire and hackney carriage driver policy. Can I ask that report presented, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So in regards to the policy, the Licensing Authority is seeking the approval of the revised policy. First published in twenty sixteen, the policy provides information and guidance on applications, decision making and enforcement. And in making available a policy allows transparency, accountability and consistency. So the proposal is the Licensing Authority is responsible for the regulation of drivers licensed in Sheffield. There's two main pieces of legislation that do govern this. And then in July twenty twenty, the Department for Transport issued statutory guidance. The overarching aim of that guidance was the protection of children and vulnerable adults from harm. Authorities must implement the recommendations unless there's a compelling reason not to do so. So the Licensing Authority already has in place a document, as I said, first published in twenty sixteen, so the authority has now reviewed that policy and in doing so has considered statutory guidance. So the policy is designed to provide individuals with a clear, consistent basis for submitting applications, to provide a clear, consistent basis for determining applications and provide licensees with information on licensing requirements throughout the time in which they are licensed. So the primary focus of the policy is the protection of the public. So users of transport should be assured that licensees are appropriately trained, vetted and held to account for their performance and this policy aims to achieve just that. So in addition to the points I've just raised, the policy is also designed to achieve compliance with legislation, statutory and local standards, to support wider strategies and initiatives specific to driver licensing, including safeguarding children and vulnerable adults. Legal, financial and equality obligations have been considered a part of the report. We undertook a formal ten week consultation, amendments were made post consultation, the most common themes that were highlighted during that consultation were things that have been mentioned today and in addition, the certificate in involvement of a professional driver, safeguard training, language proficiency, knowledge tests, DBS checks and so on and so forth. So in addition, and as requested by this committee in June, the Licensing Authority sought the views of the licensing committee and two specific issues were raised at that briefing, which I think Ibra has touched upon. So they are overcharging and refusal of fares and the timeframe for undertaking the disability awareness training. And just to conclude, we are proposing a change to one of the conditions within that policy. So the licensing services listen to comments and consent express regarding condition ten A of the draft policy. Having done so, we've taken the decision that we would like to remove this proposed condition from the draft policy. We understand and accept this condition may negatively affect licensees in being able to effectively and efficiently and we do not think it will have the desired effect of protecting customers in the way in which it was intended. In addition, the issue in question has only attracted isolated complaints and therefore services content to continue to monitor the situation regarding a number of council bookings and will work with private hire operators, licensees and stakeholders alike to manage the issue moving forwards. That being the case, Chair, we would therefore wish to amend the recommendation before you today so that members of the committee are being asked to approve the revised hackney carriage and private hire drivers' policy as set out in Appendix H with the exception of the following amendments. Condition ten A, the licensee is permitted to undertake bookings for only one private hire operator at one time, use of multiple booking systems used simultaneously is permitted. We're asking for that to be removed. Condition ten B is to be renumbered as condition ten A. And then condition ten C is the licensee must display signage of the private hire operator for which they are undertaking bookings, is renumbered, condition ten B, and is amended to say, the licensee must display signage as approved by the licensing service. That will be considered within the private hire operator vehicle policy, which will be considered in the future. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Just for ease of members, do you want to give us a page number where those changes have happened? I mean, I can see I've got page one hundred and ninety four or page forty two of the policy open in front of me, but I don't know which was the correct appendix. But you can see on the page one hundred and ninety four, the A, B and C, so we're striking out A, renumbering B and changing C to allow the signage issue to be dealt with under the driver policy, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, Chair.
Thank you. I'll open this up to members for questions and comments, if you're obviously on the policy and the whole as well as on this individual point. And I'll come a little bit later, I think, to the question of the disability training, if that's, if members are okay with that. So do I have questions and comments, David?
Thank you, Chair, just a few general comments really on this. I mean, I'd like to start off, I said it's lovely to see so many members of the taxi trade here today. I know we don't always agree on things, but it's nice to know that we all want the same thing, which this policy aims to achieve, which is a high quality, safe service for the people of Sheffield. And it's great to work with a group of people that want to achieve that as well. Just a couple of comments on things that have been raised, the statutory guidance, that doesn't come into force when this policy comes into force, that's been around for a while now. And the licensing committee does and will always continue to consider each case on its individual merits. We are required to have regard to that guidance and we do have regard to it, but you will know that people who've been referred to as for use of handhelds, no one is yet banned from being a licensed driver in this city for five years. We will continue to look at the individual circumstances. And I don't know if this, talking of national guidance, I don't know if there's a little bit of out of order, Chair, but you can tell me if it is and I know you will, but whilst there's statutory national guidance, what we do lack are national standards. There are no national minimum standards. So whilst Sheffield in this policy is expecting really high standards of our drivers, people from other authorities who perhaps don't meet anywhere near those standards are entitled to drive legally in this city and take work from licensed Sheffield taxi drivers. And I would fully support this committee actually making some representations nationally, that until there are minimum national standards that protect our travelling public, we look at legislation to actually limit out of taxis, though don't meet our standards, taking Sheffield people around this city. That is something that I'd certainly suggest to this committee. That is something that I'd certainly suggest to this committee. And just finally, you know, I fully support adopting this proposed policy as amended on the basis that we continue to work with the trade, that we continue to work with other groups in the city, that we continue to address individual issues on an individual basis. We don't just say, ah, policy, no, because we never have said that and we never will say that. And if there's anything in here that it turns out in six months' time isn't working, in six months' time, we can sit down with you and look to change that. This isn't there forever or for periods of the things that don't work, we can change them over time. So I propose that we adopt this, this policy as amended today. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, thank you David. You're not out of order at all to suggest representations, but I fear I'm way ahead of you, having already written to the, to the government on this precise issue and had a reply. I did circulate it, I think, to members of Western Street Seats, but I'll afford it to you so you can see it as well. Any more questions and comments on Paul?
Thanks very much Chair. Just make a short comment on the amendment suggested by officers and I support that amendment. I do feel the sympathy for your position Paul and I sympathise with you, with your competitors in Sheffield being such a huge multinational company that that's really difficult to deal with. I'm not attempting to tell you how to run your business, but you know, you could have your own policy within your business that might deal with the, you know, the issues as you raise them. And the same with James, I can sympathise with his position. It's not entirely clear that, that those, that multiple platforms are the cause of that issue, but you know, that's certainly an issue that nobody wants to see. And I think also practically speaking, if we were to leave that clause in, I personally cannot see how it would be enforceable and when, and when a taxi driver is working on their own inner vehicle, you know, who knows what platforms or anything else that is turned on on their phone. So I think that it's, it's, it's a policy that we need in Sheffield and I think it's a pretty good policy, but it's not set in stone. It's not a forever policy, you know, and I think we have to just keep, keep looking at it and keep doing our best and using the expertise of, of people like yourselves, the members of the public here, come to represent to try and make improvements as and when we can. And I hope that it's not the end of the conversation, but you know, just, just, just the, the middle of it and it'll be ongoing. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Paul. Tim?
Yeah, Paul said a lot of what I was going to say about this, that it is unfortunate. How do we keep this under review? Because, you know, I've had quite a few friends who have suddenly turned around and, oh, I've just been cancelled or whatever and gone somewhere else. And it's not just the odd occasion, that's the thing. It's not just a once in a, it's quite, quite often. And how do we keep this under review? And how do we try and finesse this policy so that, you know, that the service level that people would expect or hope for is maintained or increased? That's the thing. And how do we, how do we do this in the, in the long term? And that's by how, how we review our policy and how we would look at making it better. And I don't, and I'm not sure how, how we can overall. But, but it's something we need to keep our eye on and if there are ways that we can improve this, the service level, because otherwise people will, will look at, look at other alternatives, including the car.
Thanks Tim. I would echo the comments that have been made. The, the, I think we recognise that the attempt to restrict multiple operators is, is, is there, was there to address a genuine problem in terms of reliability of the service, the number of cancelled jobs, the suspicion that certain kinds of jobs are being rejected more than others. I've had, I mean, in addition to the issues raised, I've had representations for people who've had, who've wanted to book taxis, who have booked taxis to take them to the railway station in the morning and been told, yes, you have a booking. Only to be told in the morning that, no, you don't have a booking, I'm sorry. Which is, you know, you need a reliable booking if you've got a train to camp. So yeah, I, I, you know, I would, I would implore both sides of the industry before us today to, to, to try and find a solution to this, to this problem of reliability. I think, I think, you know, I, I'm reading the mood of the meeting, the mood is that the amendment is going to be approved. Before we turn to the issue of disability training, do officers have any, any response to the comments made so far?
I think all I can really echo is that this condition was intended to solve an issue that we're aware of. However, we realise that condition won't work in practice. So we're committed to working with trades, operators and stakeholders, such as those here today, about how we can improve that, that standard of service. That's what we're committed to moving forwards.
Thank you, thank you. So turning to the issue of, of the disability training, I'm not seeing any hand, so I'll just say something first. I'm, I'm minded to take the point made by, by Mr Martin, that three years is too long for that and that we need to, you know, and the, the point that other industries have a two-year deadline for this sort of training. So I'm minded to, to agree to an amendment to, to that effect. Members of the committee wish to speak on this? Mark?
Three years simply isn't acceptable. We do need to do something, one, to enable people to get around the city, but also to make sure that the drivers are provided with the information so that they're not inadvertently straying into being the bad guys here. I can accept, and I'd like maybe information from officers now, that it might not be the easiest thing to get someone to come in and do that training, but what exactly is the barriers to us and why can't we get them in? Because, because I'm also really mindful that three years is too long, but if you can't get a provider to come in and do the training for five years, then it's effectively eight years we're looking at. So, so I'd like to see a bit of expediation of that, that first element of securing a provider and, and undertaking of some nature that will come back to us when, say, that provider's been delivered. And two, as part of that spec-ing of that provider, that they can deliver it in the timeframes that we require, which are less than two years for sure.
Thank you Mark. I think, I think officers have possibly anticipated this, this wrinkle and have prepared a form of words which goes some way to, to addressing that. Craig?
Yeah, so we have anticipated that, that kind of question. So I think a comment was made by Ibra on the implementation date of the policy. We still wish to stick with the 1st of November. However, we're aware that in terms of the disability awareness training, we haven't accredited or appointed any training providers at this moment in time. I've spoken to Mr Martin on, working with him and people in the disability forums on accrediting those organisations so they are fit for purpose and the costs in terms of taking the training are minimised. So we are looking for the implementation date of the policy of the 1st of November still, but implementation date of the disability awareness training only once organisations have been accredited and appointed.
Thank you. Do members, I see Mr Satan's waving, but first I'm asking, do members of the committee have any comments on that? I mean, Mark?
The statement doesn't say when we'll get those providers on. Kind of that, for, for me, that open-ended check i- is a big, big problem for me because without actually seeing that bit move forward. And I know that there may well be barriers, but by all means, if you want to share to us what those barriers are, then, then we can at least have a better understanding of why it's not moving at a greater pace.
So kind of broadly speaking, we didn't seek to, to accredit any providers in case this didn't get passed by the committee today. We are aware of one provider that is out there that meets the criteria and I've said to Mr Martin that we will go and sit on that training to make sure he feels it meets our requirements and not just us licensing officers who don't have experience in that field. We are licensing officers, I've got no experience in disability awareness training whatsoever. So there is an organisation we're aware of. However, I'd prefer to have more organising, organisations out there that drivers can choose to meet their needs. That may be price, that may be times of the day that the training is offered, but we are committed to kind of getting something in place by the end of the year at the very latest. We have got one organisation that we know meets the needs, but we want more organisations out there too.
Sir Chair, if I'm hearing right, we will be having a provider by December, Christmas time?
That is the hope, yes.
Is that, is that telefactory?
Okay, so, so yeah. I- i- if we can come back and we would like to maybe get an update written or otherwise to simply say that those providers have been done around that December period. Being as unmindful that September's passed by already, we're now into October, yeah, I'm relatively relaxed. I don't know whether other members are happy enough with that, that response. That, that gives me the assurance that I want and then if we can get the three years down to two years or even lower, that'd be even better, but let's get that provider in.
Thank you. I'm reluctant, I must say, to throw this back to members of the public at this point. I think procedurally it's not the, not the correct thing. We've had the 30 minutes question, so if I started involving some members of the public, I'd have to involve probably all of them, you know, so, and we would spend another half an hour. So I think, I think the, my reading, if I, unless I'm wrong, is the, the mood of the meeting is that we're all agreed with the wording proposed by licensing here. Is that, is that correct? Can I take both those amendments as agreed? I'll take silence as agreement. Are there any further comments before we agree the policy? So can I take the policy as agreed? Again, silence, all take as assent. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you everybody who's attended for this item. Apologies Mr Satan for not bringing you back, but you know, this is a, it's a decision-making meeting at this point rather than a public meeting. The next item is item nine, revenue budget monitoring, month four, which is on, can we, somebody give me a page number? There we are, page 355 of your agenda pack. Ryan, do you want to, yeah, you've come to the desk, excellent, thank you. Do you want to introduce yourself and the report? Thank you.
Thank you Chair and good afternoon everyone. I think that's the, the highest starting page number I've ever been at in a, in a meeting. My name's Ryan Kiworth, I'm the Council's Director of Finance and Commercial Services. Before the committee today is the monitoring report, the financial monitoring report as at the end of month four, so that's the end of July. We're reporting a council-wide forecast overspend for the year of 21.7 million. This is a similar position to previous months, the position's moved on a little bit, but nothing, not materially. The big change this month is the inclusion of our best estimate for the pay award for 2022/23. That's not an agreed position yet. Trade unions are still balloting their members on that pay award and we won't know the outcome of that ballot and probably until the middle of November. But we've put the forecast in of what we think, of what we think might happen. Specifically for this committee, balanced at month four. As the report sets out, we've got energy and other inflation costs pressures, including pay award offset by one-offs for the year, which essentially puts the pressure into, into, into the future years, which is the subject of the next, next budget item. So balanced for this year, but that's on a one-off basis. Obviously happy to take any questions that members of the committee might have.
Any questions from members of the committee? I mean, I, I suppose I would, I would put it, I mean, you could say we're in balance for the, for the, for the current year. Obviously within that, there will be underspends and overspends, won't there? And I don't know if it'd be more informative if we saw in more detail what they were, because obviously the, the overspends are challenges we, we might address if we just, that we might not notice if we didn't, if we just took this figure. And the underspends are presumably our potential budget savings that we can put into our budget plans. Is that, is that a reasonable way to go about things?
Absolutely, I see why not Chair. We can always include additional detail in here. The, the balance we tried to strike is not overwhelming the committee with, with extraneous detail. Perhaps a suggestion would be that we, we have a, a meeting with members of the committee or with yourself outside this meeting to discuss in a bit more detail and we can decide whether it's appropriate to bring more, a more detailed report through to the next, next meeting.
Thank you. Tim?
Can I ask, was the budget ever in balance from day one? I mean, how soon did we go off track? And what monitoring was done with the budgets that was put before us at council in March? I mean, is, you know, was it in, where, where are the tickets say that actually this is a plausible financial figure at the time of the date that the budget was put in place? Because I mean, it just seems to beg a belief that, that we're so out of kilter.
The council's gross revenue budget is 1,440 million pounds. We take significant steps to ensure that the budget that's presented to members for approval at full council is robust. We effectively set the budget in December of last year. That's when decisions have to be made so that they can be consulted on and properly implemented with the right implications in place. We knew when we set the budget in March, we'd already started monitoring against the savings that were required for it, by the way. We knew when we set the budget in March that there were some risks in that budget. You, you don't set a budget with 53 million pounds of savings without, without risk. It doesn't work like that. In order to manage those risks, we set aside 25 million pounds of reserves to deal with timing and delivery risks associated with a budget that inherently is, is risky. As it stands right now, you know, month one, we, I think we were just under 20 million pounds forecast overspend for the year. Now we're just over 20 million pounds forecast overspend for the year. And at the same time, have managed to absorb significant cost increases on things like energy and other, and other cost of living increases, which simply were not apparent when we set this budget back in December, in fact. In fact, by the time we'd set the, the formal vote in March, it wasn't anywhere near as clear as it is today where energy prices were going. So setting a budget and managing a budget for a council and an organisation of this size and complexity is, is difficult to do. We do take all the steps necessary to try and, and ensure that budgets are robust, but when you're, when you're looking at even a net revenue budget of 450 or thereabouts million pounds, it's difficult to try and land, land on the head of a pin frankly.
Yes, thank you Ryan and thank you for that, that allusion to dancing on the head of a pin. I totally understand that it's difficult to fine tune down, down to the last pound or last penny. Given the current economic situation with inflation continuing at a pace, the falling value of the pound, rising interest rates and high energy prices, are we in danger of going further off course? And have we got any mitigations in place that can address that? Thank you.
Quite an interesting day to try and answer that question because anything I say will probably be wrong by tomorrow morning, if not close up business. I don't think anybody, if I'd have sat here last week, I'd have given a very different answer to the one I'm, I'm going to probably, probably give now. And that, that just reflects the, the reaction of the financial markets to the announcements made by the government at, at the end of last week. The position we're in is incredibly uncertain. The value of the pound today means that inflation, as measured domestically, will increase. So many of the things that we buy as a, as a, as a country are not priced in pounds. And if your pound is worth less, those things cost more. That starts with fuel. Energy costs are priced in dollars. So, you know, where a few weeks or months ago, a dollar might, a pound might have been worth $1.20, $1.25. Today it's worth $1.05. You've added 20% to the cost of your input raw materials in, in that alone. And that, that, that has the potential to, to, to reduce the benefits to businesses, the council, of, of some of the things the government's trying to do to keep a lid on inflation in terms of fuel prices and so on. It will, it will keep the cap on, on the price we pay for gas and electricity, but the price we pay for petrol and diesel will rise. There's no cap on that. So those sort of things are going to, are going to affect us and they'll make the inflation rate that we experience when we buy goods and services to provide services to the people of Sheffield, that inflation rate will be higher than, than it would have otherwise been. I don't know what it's going to be. What mitigation is available is, is a really, really difficult question to answer, to be honest. I think, I think there's a real risk that, that the government's finances are going to be under significant strain for a while to come now. And that, that means the flexibility that the government may, may have had or may, may have wanted to use to, to help local authorities out, there's less of, of that now. Now, we, we planned in our in our medium-term financial analysis what we considered at the time to be very prudently. We assumed a very small council tax increase, well below the rate of inflation at the time, let alone now. We assumed virtually no change in government grants, and we assumed nothing else. I'm very pleased we did that. I did that at the time on the hope that we would get some funding from government late in the financial cycle, that means December, that would allow us to take some of the very difficult things, there are lots of difficult things on the table in terms of savings, next item, and other committees as well, that would allow us to take some of those most difficult things off the table and not have to do them, because we planned prudently, been given a little bit more money than we planned for, and had some positive choices to make, or the ability to unwind some negative choices. Sitting here today, I'm really pleased we planned prudently. I'm just not sure that we're going to get the opportunity to take some of the really difficult things off the table. That's the genuine fear I have. I just hope that the national public finances aren't in such a position by later this year that local government funding is actually cut. That's my hope at this stage. Sorry for the slightly depressing answer, but that's probably the best I can do.
Thanks for that sobering assessment, Ryan.
Mark?
I'm wishing I'd brought some vodka in with me. Following off from Joe's bit, the headline figures don't necessarily help us understand the wider part. And I'm really, really mindful that offices do work well in so much that we often do look like we're going to really, really struggle with the budget, and then somehow we've managed to pull hairs out of the hat, and I'm thinking that hat's actually depleted of hair significantly. One thing I would like, and echoing Joe's bit, is understanding those totalities, where there are underspends, where there are overspends, but maybe look at some element of that, of where that's actually been to support the delivery of the council's stated priorities. So where we've not necessarily spent on certain elements of the budget, but reprioritised or team and ladled into other areas of the budget, that kind of understanding would be helpful, so that we're not looking at offices and saying, should we be cutting that, or should we, or also where those underspends are underspends now? Is that because we're looking to profile that spending to a later date due to procurement issues or anything else like that? So I'm cautious that where there's an underspend, that that isn't actually an efficiency we're not realising, it's just something we're not understanding. I probably didn't articulate that particularly well, but yeah, yeah, can we have something to help us get through this bleak view of stuff next time round? Yeah, I'm going for vodka. Cheers, Chair. We'd like a revolver with the vodka. Alexi?
Yeah, thanks, Ryan. In terms of if we are going to see possible more budget cuts coming from central government as a possibility, or even without that, do you think we're getting near to a position where we'll be faced with the stark choice of either setting an illegal budget or not meeting statutory commitments? And secondly, I'd just like to appeal to everyone here that we look at ways of generating income for the council in every way possible, rather than making more further cuts.
We won't be setting an illegal budget. Let's be really clear about that. We may very well, though, be faked. I've got no evidence to suggest that government are going to cut funding further. I'm merely highlighting that as a risk with a higher probability today than it was two months ago. So let's be clear. I'm not planning on it either. Neither are any of my finance director colleagues in other councils that I spoke to or that I speak to regularly. We always should look at income opportunities as well. What we will be faced with potentially, and this applies to this committee as it does to others, is some very difficult choices about not whether we comply with the statutory duty, but how we comply with the statutory duty. Statutory duties don't often tell you how to do it. They tell you what needs to be done, and it's up to the organisation, the local authority, to figure out how and the extent to which that duty is fulfilled. Do you try to just meet it? There are about 1,400 different statutory duties affecting local authorities, by the way. It's an enormous list, everything from children's social care through to the sort of work this committee does. The extent to which you meet it, the extent to which you exceed it, and the extent to which you also provide services to try and stop statutory duties needing to be acted upon. So to what extent do we provide preventative support, advice, guidance, and all that sort of stuff, that stops enforcement activity needing to be done further down the line? Often, there's a cost benefit to that, as in it's just sensible to do it. But we are potentially going to be faced with some really difficult, well, the committees are already faced difficult decisions about services that are not directly required by law to be done, but are beneficial to the citizens of the city. That's already the case. The risk is that we have to do more of that.
Thank you. I mean, the discussion has traded a little bit into the financial position of the whole council, which I think is, I'm happy to allow, because it should be ever-present in our minds, and also into the recent policies of the government, which have a bearing on us. Two, I share Ryan's fears. I think if the government has decided it is a, you know, they can cut taxes and not think about how that's funded. And to the extent that the markets and the think tanks and the IMF are all saying, you're just being reckless. What are you doing? What are you thinking? The obvious fear is that there's another big slice take of public funding down the road, and the easy place to go is always local authorities, isn't it? So yeah, I think we can all share that fear. I was a little bit surprised that the, apologies for taking the position chair possibly to governing this, but the Labour Conference announced, or one of the people announced, that they were going to reverse the tax cuts and spend the money on something. I thought, well, you've missed the point about the tax cuts being unfunded in the first place. If you've spent the money on something, we reversed the tax cuts, you're not doing anything to solve the fiscal hole that the government has created. But so I think perhaps we all need to look at our own parties and our politics and think about how we return a bit of prudence and sanity to the world, rather than just, you know, obviously pointing the finger of blame where it lies, but also, you know, considering what we can all do to do a bit better on that. If there are no further comments, I'll close the discussion on this report. That's for note. Are we agreed to note that? Thank you. So the next item is item 10, which is budget proposals. Is the whole of this item to be closed?
Chair, the officers may wish to introduce the report, but at the point that the members might want some more detail on the closed appendix or to debate that, we would need to close the meeting at that point.
Okay, I'm happy with that. So shall we take the introduction of the report, and then we'll close the meeting after that? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The report sets out the budget pressures, as Ryan's already highlighted, and risks facing the services, the responsibility of the Waste and Street Seeing Policy Committee, and a budget action plan to mitigate these as far as possible for 2023-24 financial year. It provides recommendations and further options for the committee to consider, which will allow our services to contribute to Sheffield City Council's ability to set a balanced budget. It's recommended that Waste and Street Seeing Policy Committee acknowledge the recommendations approved at the Strategy and Resources Committee on the 5th of July, that policy committees will be asked to develop savings, additional income options, and cover their own pressures, in effect, cash, standstill, and to require policy committees to report at their meetings in September on how they can balance their budgets. Please note, as this committee's initial response to the Strategy and Resources Committee's request, the set of budget proposals are set out in this report, including part two. Note that officers will now work with members to consult with relevant stakeholders, including partners, trade unions, and irrespective of qualities and climate change, on these proposals in this report, so as to inform the final budget proposals in November. Please note that officers will work to develop any necessary detailed implementation plans for these proposals in this report, so that the proposals, if ultimately approved, can be implemented as planned before or during 2023-24 financial year. Finally, asked to receive a further report in November that will set out the final budget for this committee, following consultation and any adjustments requested by the Strategy and Resources Committee. As Ryan's already stated, the council's Strategy and Resources Committee approved the medium-term financial analysis and committee budget recommendations in July this year. This report includes an overview of the pressures and risks in relation to Waste and Street Seeing Committee, along with an action plan of some recommendations and some further challenges and opportunities to look to move to a balanced budget position. The Strategy and Resources Committee considered the overall budget position faced by the council in the report of July 2022, deciding to find an overall £53 million budget shortfall for 2023-24. The total target saving set by Strategy and Resources Committee for the Waste and Street Seeing Policy Committee is now £11.5 million. This has moved in recent months up and down, to be fair, but it's now set £11.5 million. Majority of this is due to the inflation costs of the Waste Contract at £2.875 million, the High Wastes PFI Contract at £4.1 million. There's also additional pressure for the pay award of £704,000, and the energy costs, particularly electricity, bulk of which is street lighting across the city, estimated at circa £3.74 million. To give context, the total streets in regulation general fund budget for 2023-24 is £50.83 million. The £11.5 million target represents a 23% saving on those figures. However, £46.62 million is committed to the Waste and High Wastes PFI contracts, as well as much of the service having responsibility for regulatory and statutory functions, such as trading standards, environmental health, et cetera. As mentioned, both contracts, the Streets Head Contract and the Waste Contract, have had significant sums already taken as budget savings via previous budget improvement plans, BIPs. For the Streets Head Contract, these total annual savings are £4.25 million, and for the Waste Contract, annual savings of £6.79 million, with an additional one-year-only saving in 2018 of £5.6. The detail of those savings budget proposals is listed in 2.5. The net budget, to give some context, for Amiens Streets Head Contract is £18.7 million, and £27.92 for the Waste Contract. The proposals in this report are aimed at maximising financial resources to deliver waste and street seeing outcomes to citizens in Sheffield, considering developments in national policy, especially with the impending environmental heat. The current economic climate, and rightly, their public services and expectations, are high on Sheffield's waste and street seeing services. Four budget proposals, sorry, four budget proposals, including task and finish groups, have been held with councillor Chappell, councillor Chaplin, and councillor Diamond. Councillor Turpin covered two of those on behalf of councillor Diamond. These sessions, officers brought a number of options to those groups. I think it's fair to say, councillors, we had quite robust, challenging conversations at those four sessions. And the proposals which are in part two of this report are a consequence of those sessions. In conclusion, reasons for recommendations, members are asked to note that the unsustainable financial position highlighted by the immediate term financial analysis presented by Strategy and Resources Committee in July 2022. This report and its recommendations sets out the scale of the challenge ahead, the limited resources available, and some of the difficult decisions that will need to be taken. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Before I close the meeting to the public, is there anything members wish to say on the first part of the report? I mean, before I say any hands, I will, my question is, we're asked to acknowledge the recommendation on the 5th of July that we find savings to cover our pressures. I think it's clear from the numbers that you've given us now and that are in this part one, that we're not going to be able to do that. I don't know if acknowledgement is therefore the correct course of action, and whether, you know, a form of words that encompasses a bit of pushback is more appropriate at this point. Any reply to that? Mike?
I saw what you did there, Paul. The report does have a recommendation, though, doesn't it? That where we have, we do consider these as possible, reluctant though we are to...
All right, Mike, we're not talking about part two yet, so none of the specific proposals. So I'm happy to close the meeting and move to that if there's nothing more to say on this.
Well, I just think it's unfair on the residents of Sheffield, as it will be for other towns and cities across the country, that we are being prevented by central government from delivering decent quality public services. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, so can we end the podcast? Thank you for coming, Mr Martin. Is there any other members of the public in the room or in the gallery? Luckily, councillor Turpin, your mic's not on, because you're talking about items in the closed part of the report. The note, we are back on, we are live again, the webcast is on. Please don't comment on items in the closed part of the report. Recommendations are on page two. The recommendation, obviously, is that we acknowledge the recommendation made to us in the 5th of July. I think, I don't need, it doesn't need a mending, but narratively, I mean, I would like to say that obviously we acknowledge it, it did happen. We're not denying it happened. We don't believe it's possible for us to deliver on that because of the nature of the two large contracts, which take most of our budget, and the inflation links built into those. So with that caveat, are the recommendations on page two agreed? I'll take silence as sent. Thank you. Well, that, that report is noted, and that concludes the meeting. So thank you all for attending, and thank you to those at home for watching. Thank you.